All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If everyone will stand, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. We will begin with the superintendent and student board member report. Go ahead.
Well, good morning. Very brief report in an update in that we, this is our second meeting in July. At our previous meeting, we're really into June. We talked a lot about the summer work that's going on. That summer work absolutely continues. It is, we're really trying to move forward with multiple projects at school sites. Recognize the heat is certainly a challenge when we move through those things. So, we are doing the very best that we possibly can throughout, but the work continues on. The big thing that we probably should be talking about right now is getting ready for next year, and what incredible opportunities are available to join St. Mary's County Public Schools. As we do every single summer, we kind of, we begin our update as we move into July so that the larger community can understand. If they haven't already found their way to us, they should, because there are so many different things that they can do within the school system. Really, our education support professionals, we've got almost fifty vacancies across all these different categories. Special education paraeducators, pre-K paraeducators, building service workers, building service managers, assistant managers. We need, have a need for one bus driver, one bus assistant. We have a need for a maintenance worker, specifically somebody with a background in plumbing. So, if you, if you are involved and have an interest, please take a look at St. Mary's County Public Schools. We offer a very competitive wage and, more importantly, a full host of benefits and a great community and purpose in your work. Building service managers, system managers, workers, food service workers, food service workers at multiple sites. Every single year, we kind of go through that, go through that cycle. So, if you, if you want to get out and spend a little time with fantastic people and with kids, there are multiple opportunities to be a support professional with St. Mary's County Public Schools. Also, all of our support professionals, once employed within St. Mary's County Public Schools and enjoying the benefits therein. One of them is tuition reimbursement and internal built pathways to promotion. So, there are ways to enter as a paraeducator, have us offset the cost and support you as you work toward becoming a traditional classroom teacher. And we have multiple individuals who just exactly did that and will start work with St. Mary's County Public Schools as a teacher when they concluded working as a paraeducator this year. So, that's great. Teaching vacancies, we have about fifty teaching vacancies still. We have opportunities in kindergarten, elementary, CTE, mathematics in both middle and high school, English, science, one PE, so if you're a PE, we've got one vacancy. Get out there quick. Special education, nine positions. Also, multiple special education paraeducators, and oftentimes, that might be a way for us to find the special education teachers. They come in as a paraeducator, work towards their teaching licensure, and then they become special education. So, really, anybody that has an interest in serving children and is interested in special education, we have lots of opportunities. We also have an opportunity for a school counselor, two school psychologists, a speech therapist, and an occupational therapist at, at all times. We are always looking for speech therapists and occupational therapists. So, come join us. Not only is it beneficial to you financially, professionally, but personally, because we're a great school system, we're great people, and we teach great kids. So, if you go to www.smcps.org, on the homepage, you're going to see the big red button. Hit the big red button and see all the opportunities that await you on the other side of that click. We also have tomorrow, July eighteenth, we're having our special education virtual job fair. So, as we are streaming on the worldwide internet and it goes all across these great United States, anybody who might be interested can apply virtually to St. Mary's County Public Schools tomorrow, July eighteenth. And there's QR codes, and that's in our scroll, and that's, all you have to remember is SMCPS, and that'll unlock all of this stuff. So, with that, here we are in July. We are in our compressed work week schedule, which means that all of our employees are working ten-hour days as opposed to a traditional day, so that they might have that Friday off as an opportunity to get and spend a little time personally. So, we are in our second week. That means that we will be closed on Friday. Then we have our final compressed work week where we'll be closed on the twenty-sixth. We have our twenty-ninth is when we welcome back all of our administrators. All of our eleven-month employees will have returned the previous week, and we begin our, our school year. I will tell you that at the A and S retreat, we are going to be moving on with cellphone policy implementation, practices, protocols for the individual schools, all the way down to all staff within the school. We'll be discussing that at, at the A and S retreat, so that when we come before you at that Board of Ed meeting, and it is currently listed as PM, I believe we're going to talk about moving that to the AM, that that board meeting will pretty much have the entire cellphone policy, plan, protocols, and procedures laid out, so that everybody has a lot of time to digest what we are doing and why we are doing it, and moreover, understand then how we are going to do it. Because a lot of times, when we, when we engage in conversations, people are always like, "Well, it can't be done." I'm here to tell you that things can be done. So, that's the month of July. August, oh my goodness, we're going to have new teachers coming back on the seventh, eighth, and ninth. All of the teachers report on the fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. The nineteenth and the twentieth will be all of the open houses and back-to-school events and getting people oriented. And we open schools on the twenty-first. So, we are less than, well, really, a month away from opening of schools. And boy, there's a lot of work that needs to be done between now and then, so we are busy. But, really, today is just the introduction of our new student member of the board in her seated position where she will comfortably reside for the remainder of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and I shall turn it over to her. She has control of the clicker.
Thank you for the introduction. I'm Hannah Heisler, and I am your student member of the Board of Education this year, or as I like to call it, the SMOB, Student Member of the Board. Trying it out, I think it's short and sweet. I really like it. But thank you all for this opportunity. It truly means a lot to me. There is no greater joy than helping others, and that is what the SMOB can do for students, so I'm really appreciative. And I'd like to thank my family for supporting me, my SMASK and MASK friends for their guidance, my teachers for turning me into the student that I am, because truly, each one of my elementary, middle, and high school teachers made the biggest impact on me and are truly my superheroes. And of course, I'd like to thank Mr. Burns and Mr. Wright for being the best student government advisors that I could ask for and letting me grow as a leader, so I can stand before you today. And lastly, I'd like to thank my biggest mentors, who served as my inspirations and role models throughout high school. The three SMOb's for my four years of high school have truly inspired me to be here, and I'm so thankful that I am. So, a little bit about me. I'm a rising twelfth grader at Lenartown High School in the Global and International Studies Program, GOGIS. I went to kindergarten at Ridge Elementary School, and then I went to the remainder of elementary and middle school at Chesapeake Public Charter School. So, I sort of have seen two sides of the public school system. And I'm also the former St. Mary's Association of Student Council's president, which was the body that elected me as student member of the board. And I feel that I'm uniquely suited for this position because I have two teachers as parents. So, I feel that I've seen both sides of the education system, growing up, hearing about, you know, the challenges of being a teacher and the, the things that they've accomplished. And sometimes, they'll come up to me with like, "Oh, man, like, this kind of stinks." And then I will propose something to them, and they'll be like, "Well, that's, that's not feasible." So, I feel like I have the unique lens of I know what's feasible on the school system side, which is very helpful when it comes to voicing the opinions of students, because I can not only ask for things for students, but I can ask for them in a practical way that the school can actually accomplish them, which helps better serve the needs of the students and makes it easier for the Board of Education. So, as student member of the board this year, I plan on continuing the school visits tradition that the two predecessors before me started. Specifically with the platform SMCPS, we hear, and that acronym has yet to be completely decided, but the premise of this is what it means to truly listen, to understand, and be present in the moment, free of distractions, and truly comprehending what other people have to say. And that helps you be a better listener to your teachers, helps you be a better student, and it also helps you be a better friend. And so, I think that's something that's super important, and I'm super excited to visit those schools. I'm also excited to lead the student, the superintendent's Student Leadership Council, which I did get to meet last year, and so that was awesome, and I'm so excited to work with them. But primarily, through my school visits, I hope to learn about students' understandings and experiences at each school across the district and learn how the school experience might differ from school to school. That way, I can understand inequities and the needs of each student specifically at each school. That way, I can better represent all the students. And I really just hope to discuss with them and really have a conversation with them, have a meaningful conversation. And that discussion goes both ways, because I have a lot that I can learn from them about their experiences and their understandings and what they're learning in school, but they can also learn from me, maybe guidance. Maybe they want to be the student member of the Board of Education, so I really just want to make that possible for them. And so, that sort of goes along with my platform of hear. And I truly just want to be the biggest advocate for students, because I feel that as student member of the Board of Education, I have the ability to comment or ask questions or post suggestions to things. And if I don't use the full ability of that voice, then I'm not, I can't truly represent the students. And that's also, if I don't share opinions of students that I know that students have, it's not really fair to the board either, because then they don't get to know what the students are thinking. So, I truly just want to be the biggest advocate that I can. As far as my platform this year, it is accessibility, transparency, and visibility. Firstly, I want to make my role as student member of the board more accessible to other people. That way, they know not only who I am, but how they can reach me, because I'm a resource for them. So, I want to make easier direct contact to me, reports to the students or my constituents about my work and what I'm doing as a student member of the board. Potentially, I'd love to have some sort of newsletter. And then also, I would just like to make it more accessible for kids to learn about how they can actually be the student member of the board, because I feel like so many people hear about it and they want to be it, but they don't know how they can do that. And it's kind of a weird process of going through St. Mary's Association of Student Councils. So, I really just want to teach people about that. That way, they know that that's an opportunity that's available to them. And I also want to be very transparent in my actions. I want to be very accountable to the students for exactly what I'm doing for them, because I am serving all seventeen thousand of them. And so, I will be doing this through social media, which I've actually already done two posts. And I will be sharing when board meetings are, because they are open to the public. So, I really just want people to be able to come, and I'll be sharing my reports as well. And then lastly, I want to be visible, because I am, you know, acting on this board. All of, all of you are so visible in the community and come to community events, and I want to be like that too. I don't want to be some like, "Oh, what's the student member?" Like, I want everybody to know that the student member is me. And so, I'll do that through, of course, school visits, but also through events like graduation and Rising Freshman Night. So, I just really want to be a part of the community. And then, students, if you're watching this, I want you to know that I'm here to represent you. I'm here to help you. I'm here to listen to all of your concerns. So, please talk to me at any time, and I promise I will turn those concerns into action and, more importantly, into advocacy. I'd like to encourage all of you to keep tabs on me to make sure that I am serving you all. All of my actions will be on the SMOB Instagram, at smcps underscore SMOB. Thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know you all this year. It is truly an honor.
One more click. There you go. At smcps underscore SMOB. Nice. Thank you very much.
And welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent.
Okay, we have no recognitions. We have no public hearing. Do we have any public comment? Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education approve the consent agenda consisting of the following. Approval of minutes of June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, personnel, teachers, personnel, administrative, and supervisory.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have no action items this morning, but we do have Dr. Farrell company somewhere for the cell phones in schools presentation. And Ms. Long, there she is. She was hiding back there.
Wanted to make sure I didn't break it for you. It was going to be an awkward moment. I wanted it to be mine. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We are here to, to talk a little bit about cell phones in schools. So, Dr. Smith approached Ms. Long and I and said, "I have a little project for you. I want you guys to put together a work group to talk about the presence of cell phones in schools." So, we did. We started with a why. Why do we want to do this? So, we looked at the research around cell phones in schools and how cell phones impact students in the schools. And so, as we started looking into the research, and this is just two clips from some of the research we found, we did find that there are reasons why school systems are moving to eliminate the presence of cell phones in schools. We did find that without cell phones in schools, students are achieving at higher levels, and their social, emotional well-being has improved greatly. So, these are just two quick snippets, some of the research that we found and shared with the work group before we met. We also looked around, of course, in the news, you'll hear that there are lots of states that are moving to banning cell phones. Most recently, Virginia has banned cell phones in public schools, Indiana, Florida, California, and of course, New York City also joined the banning of cell phones. Looking across the state, we can see some of our, our neighboring counties are also going through some of the same processes that we are. Recently, Calvert County just issued a ban on their cell phones in schools. But a lot of other school systems are also in the process of reviewing their policies and regs and having work groups and stakeholder meetings about what it means to have cell phones in schools and if they're going to ban them or restrict them or things like that.
Okay, so we do currently have policy related to cellphone use. And I'm just going to hit some highlights on that, just to kind of re-familiarize you with what's in that policy. It addresses limiting the use of electronic communication devices that impede the instructional climate. That piece is so important, because you're going to hear us focus on that throughout our work with the work group and the presentation today. Create a disturbance or disrupt the school environment. It says that students may possess wireless communication devices, kept out of sight and turned off during the instructional day, at the beginning, the beginning of the instructional day to the end of the instructional day. And it also addresses exceptional circumstances, which we see maybe in students that have individualized education plans or five oh four plans related to medical needs. So, we do have that in place already. We are looking to revisit that, we are revisiting that regulation now and looking to make revisions based on the outcome of the work group. Also, in our code of conduct, in code eight oh two, inappropriate use of personal electronics. There, we address the inappropriate use of cell phones, and we are also looking to make revisions to that, really put more descriptors in there and clarify specifically consequences. Just state more specifically consequences, so that both students and parents will be very aware of consequences for inappropriate use. So, our next steps were, we wanted to hear from our community. So, we pushed out a survey to staff, to students, and to parents. And those numbers there for responses as of the beginning of July, we pushed it out again most recently at the beginning of this week, and already, we've seen a good leap in responses. About nine hundred and seven staff responses. We have nine hundred and ninety-one student responses and just over twenty-five hundred parent responses. So, people are still obviously interested in this hot topic and responding, so that, that certainly informs our work. And you can see the response, oh, sorry, yep, you can see the responses there from staff at, across all levels, and then students, mostly our high school students, at sixty-one percent are responding. Of course, they definitely will see the usage in high school as we go through our presentation, but definitely concerned about what we're talking about with cell phones. And then there are the parent responses, and parents may have students across multiple grade levels, so that's what's presented there. Our first question in the survey, we all want to know, how often are students using cell phones in school? And you can see from our high school students, approximately seventy percent of students that responded to the survey are using it every day in school. We're talking about in school. And then middle school, thirty-two percent of the students that responded. And this is consistent with what we're seeing in schools as well.
So, our next question was, how students are you using your cellphone in schools? And you'll see from the results that we had previously, almost seventy percent of the responses were, I'm using it to text. And so, the question would be, who are you texting? Are you texting others? Are you texting your parents, your friends, your family? Who, who are you texting? The next was that they said that they were using it for instructional applications. We don't know what that quite means. Is that that they're Googling answers or they're trying to figure out the answer to a problem or something? Next, browsing the internet. Again, we're not really sure what for. Playing games, obviously, there's probably not a school-assigned game that we have students using their cell phones for.
There are some that are fun, instructional, but fun, but you do that on our devices.
And then, of course, the social media, which can sometimes be detrimental, especially during the school day, the instructional day. And of course, taking photos or videos, and we've seen some of those photos and videos are not of things that, that they should be taking pictures of or videos of. So, we dove in a little bit long, a little bit deeper, and we asked if cell phones should be allowed to be used during the instructional day. So, you can see, students are like, "Yes, absolutely. Let us keep our cell phones." Staff are, are saying, "No, no." And parents, look at the response from parents, parents are saying, "No, they should not be."
Dale, can you go back to that, to the previous slide? So, the only caveat, I think, on this slide is if you take the, during the instructional day, especially for your high school students, that includes lunch, correct? So, that's probably where a lot of this is coming from. And then also, if you complete your work, I know, you know, the teachers would allow you to be on your phone after, you know, your, you know, your work is completed, or if you have an open period or whatever. So, I don't want to mislead anyone that, you know, "Oh, they're not learning calculus. They're sitting here playing, you know, a game." So, some of that could be, you know, drawn out from those periods of time too during the school day. So, I keep going. I agree.
So, we went over that one. Do you think cell phones are a distraction in schools? So, you can see even students say, the majority of the time, "Sometimes it is a distraction." Staff are saying definitely that they see that there is a distraction, and parents as well are saying, "Yeah, there, there's definitely a distraction there." Do you think cell phones have a positive impact on education in schools? Staff and parents overwhelmingly say, "No." But even the students, like, if you look at the amount of students that said, "Yes," it's in the minority here. Do you think cell phones have a negative impact on students' social interactions at schools? Everyone said, "Yes." Even the students, you can see, the students are even saying, "Yeah." Like, we can see that there might be a problem there. And then we asked, "What guidelines should be in place?" Like, should there be restrictions? Should they be banned completely? And we can see that a lot of the responses, students, staff, and parents are saying that there should be restrictions on cell phones during the instructional day for students.
So, our next step with our, after looking at our research, pushing out the survey, and looking at our policy and regs, was to get our work group together. So, that's what we did. The cellphone work group was comprised of central office staff, adminis, school principals, school staff, parents, students, and members of our education and administrative associations. So, we met twice on June thirteenth and on June twenty-sixth. We developed goals for our work group, and they are as follows. To evaluate and recommend how both students and staff utilize cell phones during the instructional day and to develop comprehensive implementation and, a comprehensive implementation and a comprehensive communication plan. So, I'm going to spend a little bit of time here, because I want to talk about what the, the work of the work group itself during those meetings. So, the first meeting on June thirteenth, participants worked in groups to identify concerns that affected staff, students, and parents, related to limiting cellphone use or just general cellphone use in schools. And as well as after they identified concerns, then they brainstormed solutions. So, that was, we had such great conversation about that. You know, all the, the different groups working together and just listening to the different concerns that came out. And what we heard loud and clear was distracting and disruptive behavior in classrooms and in hallways. So, again, as I said earlier, that instructional environment, you know, is so important. And studentship is important, as well as staff and our families as well, to, to renew the focus on instruction in those classrooms. So, that really is at the heart of our work. Students felt an emotional dependence, almost an addiction, if you will, to their cellphone. Using cell phones, a concern was using it for medical needs, as I talked earlier, that we do have solutions for that, and the ability to contact parents. They mentioned that as well. We talked about, for solutions, we talked about students having the access to supports in schools and the resources, right? Our, our school counselors, our social workers, if they were feeling uneasy about not having their cellphone or not being able to check it. We do have resources for that as well. For staff concerns, more around enforcement, enforcement of the policies that we're putting in place and general use throughout the school day. We talked about the need to teach expectations to our students again and revisit that throughout the school year and just be very clear on our messaging about what the plan is and the consequences and reinforcement of that. And then, parent concerns came up, the ability just to contact their students, get messages to their students and if emergencies were to arise. So, we talked about really getting that communication back out to families on how they can reach their students during the school day, whether through the main office, sending a message that way. And, and SMCPS communicating to parents if there's an emergency, maybe an unscheduled school closure, or how that messaging gets out to parents, so that we have, so that parents do feel like they have that ability to get messages to their parents and so on. In the June twenty-sixth meeting, we talked about the implementation plan first, and the work group recognized our current regulation that's already in place, because there was a lot of talk about that, like, "We already have something in place that says limited cellphone use." But really diving into that and making some, knowing that there were some revisions that need to be done with that. And especially, the revisions especially related to grade levels. You know, high school looks different than middle school, would look different than elementary, so we're revisiting that. And also, in our code of conduct, the need for clear consequences and consistent enforcement for inappropriate use. So, we are revisiting that as well. And then in the communication plan, the work group, lots of, lots of talk about communication and getting that word out. A letter or video message from our superintendent, and then continuous messaging, home rooms, in-home rooms, beginning of year assemblies, morning announcements, after breaks, after-school breaks, during the code of conduct review at the beginning of the year, all schools do that with students, and signs in school buildings, in classrooms, and smores, the letters that go out to families from schools. So, there's a lot of opportunities to communicate this message, and we need to take advantage of that. Just overall, I just want a overall good discussion with the work group participants on really preserving that instructional time and that understanding that that is so important to have kids focus in those classrooms.
So, then we, we moved into an acceptable cellphone use plan that we are kind of sharing for the first time publicly here with the board. And so, we broke it into different categories. And so we broke it into different categories, and starting at the top with administrators. So our administrators, our school administrators, we provide them a cellphone stipend so that we have access to them in needs of an emergency or to keep lines of communication open. There's many times that central office needs to communicate with school-based administration during the day. So administrators will be able to use their cell phones, the cell phones that we provide stipends for, for purposes of communicating business needs and, you know, making sure that we're in contact with them if there's something happening in their building or in an emergency or, you know, even a pipe bursting or something in the hallway. Those are things that need immediate attention. So administrators will have access to their cell phones. School system staff, what we're saying is that while you're teaching in front of kids, you're not on your cellphone, because your role, your job is to be working with students and providing that instruction to them during the time that kids are in front of you. So if you need to use your cellphone during planning or lunch or before, after school when you're not with students, okay, no problem, that's fine. But while you're in front of kids, the expectation is that your personal cellphone is put away. We provide other methods of communication through email and Google chats and our Via system and things like that. So there's lots of other ways that staff can communicate amongst the other staff members in their building as they need to, without having to use their cellphone in front of kids.
And for students, for high school students, cellphone is off and not visible during the instructional day. They can have access and use their cellphone during lunch. And for middle school students, phone is off and not visible during the day. That includes not during lunch, not during recess, but then they can access it at the end of the school day, after school. And for elementary school, we really do encourage, we discourage really, students, elementary students bringing their phones to school because those phones will have to be off and not visible throughout the entire school day.
So before we leave this, this is where we will start. Recognizing that elementary-aged children probably shouldn't have unauthorized access to technology that they can then go and visit and see and do. I mean, recognize a cellphone is a great communication tool, it is also a seriously dangerous device. Where you can capture images, you can share things, you can do a lot of things that you shouldn't do with that cellphone. So elementary children, shouldn't really be bringing them to school at all, but if they are, for whatever purpose, it'll be off and away and no one will ever see it. There will be exceptions, obviously, if there are medical, IEP-related things, of course. But for the average-aged elementary school student, they shouldn't be traveling to school with a cellphone. So that would be the first message we want all parents to hear. Middle school students, we understand their lives are more complicated, there's a lot of things going on. They can certainly bring a cellphone to school, but it should be off and away. We definitely heard from parents saying, I need to contact my child in the middle of the day to tell them to get on a different bus. Well, that's not a communication to send to your child, because your child is twelve years old or thirteen years old and can't make that active decision. That's a message you should be then conveying to staff at the building. So the staff at the building can make arrangements for the child to be on a different bus. Parents also said, well, what if I have an emergency? Well, if you have an emergency and you are sending a message directly to your twelve or thirteen-year-old in a class and no adult knows what that emergency is, what kind of thing it could be, you are leaving a child in the middle of a group without any adult ability or even inclinate to assist. So if, so, and the examples are given, like, what if there's a death in the family? Well, then, you know, you should, please don't send that to a twelve-year-old. Please contact the school, the school will then coordinate and have somebody go in and appropriately govern a situation for things like that. This idea that there's going to be an emergency where you have to, you have to contact adolescent immediately, that's, they're not in a, they're not in a position to be able to take action other than through adults. So imagine you have an anxious child, the anxiety that you are placing on that twelve-year-old child when you're like, I need you to get on a different bus because you need to go to a different house because you need to do this other thing. That twelve-year-old now has to take action and interact with adults and do all these things and advocate for themselves and may very well find themselves in a confrontation with somebody because they're going to say, well, my mom told me to do this, or my dad told me to do this. And the adult will go, I have no idea what you're talking about, because the message wasn't sent to me. So middle school, you can bring it, we'll figure out the exact way, we'll work out the exact way at the end of the day. So in the event that you do need to communicate information to your, to your children, your children would be able to access that information at the end of the day before they get on the bus or what have you. And we have two fantastic middle school principals here as well, so that, it was a robust conversation about that. That's middle school. At the high school, you are, you're young adults, you know? We want to give you every opportunity and, and agency to recognize the power of the device and then to demonstrate your self-control. You can have your phone with you, bring it with you, put it away. And at lunch, one hour lunch, all three schools, one hour, you have one hour with which you have unfettered access to the outside world and you might do all of the things that you said you wanted to do during that one entire hour. And we're going to give flexibility during that time. But at the end of that hour, you're going to have to turn off that device and put it away for the next hour and forty-five minutes or whatever it is and go through withdrawal, whatever it is, to the end of the day. And then turn it on and you can go through. We're talking about a span from eight until noon and from one until two forty-five. And I'm sorry, high school kids, you can do it. You really can do, I have, I have faith and confidence that you all will have the ability to go cold turkey for four hours in the morning and then get a reward and then an hour and forty-five minutes in the afternoon, and then you're free. So that's going to, that's going to be key. We're not, I'm not going to go down the whole path and talk about the isolation of the cellphone and the myth of social media and the radicalization that's being perpetrated on all of human beings. I'm not going to go down that path. All I want to do is, when you're in an English class, with, let's say, like a gifted teacher, let me think of one.
Teaching poetry?
Mrs. Heisler at Leonardtown High School, where she belongs. We want you to, we want you to be here and here, and you can't. And if everybody is honest with themselves, they know that as soon as they pick up the phone, you're not multitasking. You're fubbing, you know, you're, you've lost, you've lost all that. And, and I really do, we've built this, we think, based on all the conversations and input we've had with, with, with an appropriate approach depending upon who you are and what you're doing in a building. The devil's going to be in the detail. We want to make sure that everybody hears it ahead of time. When we come back before you on the thirty-first, we're going to talk about the consequences. Because right now, we're just putting forth the expectation, because we believe the expectation can be met. We really do. I have, I have an unbelievable wealth of, 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 of trust in children and young adults, that they can do this. So this is the first, everybody can get to talk about it. The, the survey is out live, the survey is out live to staff and students and parents. Because those are the ones that are going to be impacted by, by, by this. It's not, it's not open to the larger community, it's open to staff, students, and parents. And we'll continue all this when we come back to you on the thirty-first, we will have updated numbers from all of these surveys. And as more information comes out, that might also then craft people's responses to surveys and things such as that.
And so what we see here is just very, yes, yes, you can use a cellphone and there are the appropriate times. Before school, after school, high school, during lunch, and then when you should not be using cell phones. And this messages, the messaging will be out, visible in classrooms, in buildings, students. Just a very clear, simple message and reminders to them as they go through their school day.
And so the work group was, was very clear in their recommendations, that they wanted a consistent message that's delivered by our superintendent, that can be reinforced at every level, by every member of the school system. Something that can be accessed multiple times and shared out. And so they came up with a messaging system for the superintendent.
Give me homework, yes, they were.
They want video messages that are geared towards the audience of parents and guardians. They want messages to students, so that students have a direct message from the superintendent to the students in the school system. A message to our administrators, because they are going to be having a heavy lift at the beginning of the school year of enforcing this. And then, of course, a message to our staff to reinforce, this is the right thing to do for students. And then, of course, we know that we have work to do revising the student code of conduct, the student handbook, and of course, the presentations of such things at the beginning of the school year too.
Consistency, consistency, consistency. That's the one thing that they said. You don't, you don't get to, a high school student encounters six teachers throughout the day, as well as all the rest of the school staff, but six different teachers. And we can't have one teacher being the, cell phones are off. And another one being, I'm, I'm, I really, I really, you know, I really like you. As a reward, you've all done a great job. Everybody gets to pull out their cell phones and do stuff. We, we have to, we have to break ourselves of that, of that habit. If it is a habit in your instructional classroom, a reward should be, read a book. You know, engage, engage in something and something a little bit less isolating and more productive toward the content of the class that they're in.
So, we're on the question part here.
Yes, the question.
So how are we, meaning the school system, from an administration standpoint, going to pull the reliance off of cell phones? And here's my, here's my two comments on that. Number one, when I go to check my child in, he's late at Chopticon, I scan a QR code and I check him in, right? Like, so what are we going to do about that? Because now we're saying, you can't use it, but yet we're relying on it in order to, you know, to do that. Secondly, and, you know, I'm the, I'm the sports mom, so the, the communication with the students through remind during the school day for departure, you know, early departure, early release, you know, if you have an away game, you know, canceled game, whatever, that is all going to also have to be, because we have relied on this functionality to push this message out. So now we're going to have to go back to old school, you know?
Announcements.
Yeah, I mean, well, and part of the problem too is, you know, you have a lot of coaches that aren't in the buildings anymore. You know, they're not, you know, they're no longer our teachers, they're, you know, they're outside people. So just, just, you know, additional challenges that we have.
So my question would be, I'm in my seventh period, I'm in my fourth period English class, again, to pick on English. My coach sends me something through remind.
Well, it doesn't matter, I mean, you can, you can get it at one lunch.
Right.
Right, but I mean, and part of it too is the coaches aren't pre-planning, right? To let them know what dismissal time is or, you know, things like that. So that, I'm just, I'm just, it's a cultural shift, is all I'm saying.
Imagine if, if we could reorient everybody to having respect for when kids are in school.
That is my point.
And saying, when kids are in school, from eight until noon, their only job is to be learning in the classroom and if you send them a message, they're not going to get it because they shouldn't get it, because they're supposed to be doing their classroom and their work. And then in the afternoons, they're, you know, from one to two forty-five. I think that the, it's, it's just, it's just a real challenge when people really do believe that, you know, you should be able to interrupt a person's life at any time when it's convenient to you to send a message. We need to be much more planful about things, because the other part of that is, I'm a parent and if I didn't get the remind message, I don't know what's going on, so, you know, that should be back to the coaching staff, you don't, you know.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, there's just, you know, there's more than just, you know, these, you know, these four boxes or, you know, whatever. I'm just saying, it's going to be, it's going to be a shift for everyone.
Every, right, every single person is going to have to be involved with.
Within those buildings, yes.
Yes, yes.
There's a learning curve, but I'm pretty confident that that people will, some people will have a steeper learning curve than others.
Right.
But everybody can get there. They can, and they need to. We all need to.
Would this extend to like smartwatches as well? Because I know some students like text on smartwatches.
Yeah, so, let's, that is definitely part of the elephant, I'm not ready to take that. I mean, because there are, there are smart, smartwatches that are wifi-enabled and connected to your phone, there are smartwatches that are not. There are smartwatches that are activity trackers, there are smart, smartwatches that have functions for parents so they can know where their children are at all time and that's a, that's a reassurance. Smartwatches can't record video, and I have a smartwatch and I'm not, you know, texting on it isn't, you know, you'll probably see me because I'll be like, what? And, and that would be an indication, you know, to leave it.
And I'm going to ask a really dumb, luddite question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So if you have a smartwatch that's connected to your phone, if your phone is off, do you get anything through your smartwatch?
No, you won't, you won't get, you won't get any push items.
Okay, well then, there you go.
Oh, you just didn't time.
Yeah, then a watch becomes, I don't know, a watch.
Yeah.
It's a little less smart, but it's still, it's still can make it. And it's still tracking all your biological, all the things that, like, so if you don't, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to do all of that. But that, that came up multiple times throughout, I just don't, there are a lot of, there are a lot of reasons why people wear a smartwatch and necessarily, the only thing you can do on it is, is text. Some people could call, but the generation, you can't, they're not, you don't use your phones to talk to each other. And if you do, you put it on speakerphone so everybody can hear your conversation, so, which is interesting. Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't gone down the smartwatch portion yet. We're going to see if we can bite this part of the elephant first, which is just getting the, I mean, what we, what, I don't even have my phone with me over here, I think I left it up there. Look at that, see, I'm getting, I'm, I am getting so used to this, I can actually be ten feet away from my phone. I'm growing, I am growing. I mean, really what we want to do is we want to move away from walking into an instructional space and seeing that the majority of the kids aren't directly engaged in a lesson, they're on their phone and they are doing stuff. And they're texting, and they're not texting their teachers to have a deeper understanding of whatever. They're texting their friends going, I can't believe how stupid this is, how about if we do this, well, I don't know, we should do this, or, or whatever. Or did you hear about, or, I mean, it, it's, 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 it's a, it's a lot. And we want to set, we want to set us up for success. So we're trying to put this forward in a way that we believe can ultimately be communicated effectively and then hopefully managed efficiently. The first few weeks of school are going to be tough because everybody's going to try their hand and see if they can work their way through and look for the point of vulnerability at every single place. And so it will be an all-hands-on-deck. That's why we didn't present any of the consequences part until the next board meeting. So you're going to have to tune in on the thirty-first to hear all about what we're going to do if you can't meet this expectation. And in the meantime, we have opportunities for people to provide us input about what the expectations that we're putting forth look like.
Yes, I was surprised by the, your survey revol- results with the parents. I thought parents would be overwhelmingly supporting the cellphone, helicopter, parents, if you will. So I, I was really surprised that most of them are, you know, supporting the fact that we got a limit. And just adding what Hannah said, the flip phone is a cellphone. And that's really limited just to communications as opposed to smartphone. You just would have, not have any access to the internet. So my question is, have you given any consideration of maybe limiting it to flip phones for emergencies or something? And it would preclude any of the students from access to the internet?
I think the problem with the flip phone is that they saw the ability to text and, and things like that, so by removing that distraction, I think we're just placing the emphasis back on, you're here to learn and we're here to teach and that's what's happening in our classrooms.
The communication, the communication that was just sent out, that will be at the board meeting next time, or the information that you gave us on the responses?
It'll all be updated. Yeah, we'll update it with the new numbers and.
So have there been so far? So have there been so far, um, more people respond, respond compared to the first one?
Yeah, they, they're continuing to respond and the responses are similar to what we're, what we've seen already.
No, I mean, how many uh people have responded? That's how I was looking at it, because the first one,
Yep.
um, so more responses have come back this past time?
Since, since that screen grab at the end of July, we are now at almost a thousand staff. Almost a thousand students.
That was the first.
Yeah, this is, this is just, this is the, this is the first blush. And then when we come back to you, we'll just update these slides with all the, all the.
No, I just wanna see more people respond, that's all. I'd just like to see more than five hundred and uh, six hundred and seventy-five, so that's all.
We've almost doubled already, actually, from those numbers.
Okay, that's all, boom, I'm done.
And it only, it went out Monday.
Monday.
Yeah, we, we sent it out on Monday, yep.
Yeah, cause that's, when she was explaining earlier about the staff responses, didn't you say that you, we're up almost to a thousand?
Mm-hmm, yep, yeah.
And I think that if, if there is a, if there's a a media, uh, there's a story that runs on it as well and gets more information out, uh, you know, as we, we push out the, we, after our board meetings, we are now then taking our board meetings and and dividing them up and then sending them out to Insta-face tweet gram, right? So, so we get, we get more, we get more interaction like that as 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 well. So, um, again, we're, we're spending as much time as we can before we get to, so that, so that nobody gets to say, what? I didn't know that. Um, and and again, when we open the schools, we're gonna have signage all over. So if by some stretch of the imagination, you're a parent, you never checked your email, you're a kid, you never checked your email, you never read any of the newspapers, you don't follow any of the social media, you're off all of Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter, eh, when you walk up to a building straight off, you're gonna see a sign that outlines exactly what the acceptable cellphone use policy is at that particular grade level or at um uh, school, school level. So we think we're gonna, we we thi- we think that at least the information should be accessible and available to everybody.
Everyone seems to know when the open houses are, so I'm sure they.
Yes, and and the, and as um Ms. Heisler re- referenced, um, uh, she's gonna do her own student member of the board smore. Every single school has a smore, every single school sends out this more, every single smore is based on each one of the individual school websites. So if you, if you missed everything else and you just go back to the school website, you're gonna see the smore that's gonna be there as well, every single one of the smores is gonna be tweeted as well. And every single one of the smores, pretty much through the entire month of August, is going to reference the the cellphone um uh policy, so.
And I wanna say that one of the board's goals is increased student achievement. And based on the research that has been done, and I appreciate the slide that you put in, what other states are doing. And I clicked on those five slides and read what they're doing in those states. This is not only a Saint Mary's County issue, it is a national issue that's being looked at and that the use of the cellphones are a distracting, distraction and are having a negative impact on student achievement. Your presentation is timely because it's being talked about all over the nation, in the state of Maryland and in the southern Maryland region. And I appreciate the people who came out in the summer to attend the meetings, the students, the parents, the um administrators, principals, so that we can get a balanced um opinions of what they think. So I think that's very good in your survey. And you're still taking responses from that survey that people can still give their input. And you, your research has already preceded your slide because you already had your presentation done and you say even more coming in. So um, thank you for everything you're doing, this is what the board does. I appreciate the student board member here, she can give the input on students. And I welcome aboard, we get the best student board members.
Yes, we do.
They are excellent. So thank everybody for what you're doing during this hot summer. And people wonder, what does the school system do in the summer? We work.
Yeah, we do.
We work.
We work.
Thank you.
Kathy, you have anything?
No, I, I said what I needed to say, thank you.
All right, I think we're good to go, thank you. All right, and with that, we are finished. Uh, our next board meeting is gonna be on Wednesday, July thirty-first, and it will be a morning meeting, eight AM for executive session, and the open meeting begins at night. With that, we are returned.